We call the meeting to order police stand for the pledge. Do we have any veterans in here? Veterans, raise your hand. Ah, you've done it before. Back there, in the back. Could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The three veterans that raised their hand. You got four veterans. Uh, thank you for your service.
Five.
Five. Five. Mr. Reidsmaar, famed clerk, could you call the roll?
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
Clerk Reidsmaar, here. Treasurer Delahue.
Here.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Board member conflict of interest statement.
None.
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 We'll start, uh, before we start our meeting, we're now gonna have, uh, a public hearing, uh, for the Phase One Sewer Special Assessment District. Uh, so what I'd like to do is if you could, uh, and I'll tell you when to start, but come up... Uh, come up one at a time, um, give us your name, spell your last name, and if you are in the district, in the Phase One District, if you got a notice in the mail, uh, please let us know that as well, because if you want to appeal, uh, any possible assessment, if the board decides to pass it, right, uh, that preserves your right with the tax tribunal. So we wanna get it right, and we gotta get your name in the minutes. So, um, just go right ahead, and, uh, there is no three-minute time limit. Um, so, uh, the first person up, Mary, did you wanna start? Catherine? Not you? Okay. Is there anyone that wants to comment on the Phase One Sewer Special Assessment?
Come up to the mic.
Yeah, please.
My name is Dennis Forsberg. The last name is spelled F-O-R-S-B-E-R-G. I'm, uh, I'm at 6171 Lake Street, and we are in favor of the project, and it's, uh, it's been long overdue, and, uh, I just wanna thank the board for all their hard work. Hopefully it goes through tonight.
Could you spell your name one more time to us, please?
Dennis, D-E-N-N-I-S, last name Forsberg, F-O-R-S-B-E-R-G.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anyone else, please?
Did you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Mary Deibel, D-E-I-B-E-L. Live on Pike Street in Phase One. Well, my family does, and we think one of the people that started this project a long, 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 long time ago, my father, so of course I'm obviously much in favor of it. Can't wait, we're all so excited, and we wanna thank all of you for all the hard work that you've done, and we hope and pray that goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'm sorry, Dave couldn't be here tonight.
He knows I'm here.
I'm sorry?
He knows I'm here.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Debbie Garner, G-A-R-N-A-R, and I own a home on the Pike, and so I'm in Phase One, and I don't really need the sewer system, but I really wanted to go through because I know so many people that are in need of it. Um, so I'm in favor. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing comment, please. There's, uh, there was a gentleman here that... Was gonna speak, where'd he go? Okay, uh, board members also in your pack at, uh, there is, uh, one written objection. We got one written objection during the time period.
David Cooper.
Yeah, Mr. Cooper. Anyone else? Now's your chance. Yes, sir?
Can I borrow, uh?
Yeah.
Mister, I got a handicap thing, I can't get up. Can I borrow your speaker?
Sure.
I will be real, I'm okay.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thanks, Kelsey.
I'm Jim McCready, and this is my wife, Penny. Uh, we've been in Indian River for forty years. Love it.
Jim, how do you spell your last name?
We think you love it.
Jim, how do you spell your last name?
M-C-C, Ready. I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead. Enter your addresses.
We live in Orange Beach in the winter, we come back here in the summer, and we love it here. But anyway, uh, we're in favor of the project, we think it's great. I've, uh, I've interviewed some of the contractors, uh, personally, and with my ISM engineering people that are in this kind of field. Uh, recently had an interview with one of the, um, contractors to, uh, what's the, the engineering company? The, the company is doing the, the, the gravity stuff.
Mel?
No, the gravity.
Elmer.
Elmer, yeah. The contractor, Elmer's, and he made a comment. He said he has never seen such precise, accurate engineering drawings in his twenty years of business. Wow. So everything's pretty good, uh, and we're in favor of it, and, uh, one of the things that, uh, I'll be, I wanna make this real quick, but, uh, there's a couple of little deficiencies that you guys should know, and I think it's all explainable, uh, it's just tech tech and a lot is numbers. Uh, your, your letter endorsement calls out sixty-eight grinder pumps. For personal, for the houses. There's only twenty-five in that, in Phase One. But that's just, I think that covers because you're, you're mixing two Phase One and Phase Two with a lot of the paper.
They're interchangeable.
Yeah, okay, so they were, so that's, that's, but then, uh, and then the Grand Traverse contract, they've, they've got an award letter ready to be signed by Bob for four million, five sixty-five, seven hundred. Their contract for Phase One is only two, two million, three hundred and one. The difference is the Phase Two project. So they're getting a contract for four million, they're only gonna do two point three million, but I'm sure you're covering, you're covering your tracks for the other one worth of... That's just efficiency, uh, and, uh, okay, essential, okay, the electrical problems, that's it. One other big one is, uh, oh, I'll get this over. We're in favor of the project, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that everything's gonna be perfect. We live on Constance and Arthur, and Aaron and I, the engineer, have gone over this, uh, lift station number five, many, 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 from back to two thousand and twenty-two, and it was urgently in my driveway. We worked it up, we got it up a hundred feet, they, they, Ingle wanted it a hundred feet away. They're only eighty-five feet away, but that's fine, it's, it's in the, it's in the road. It's, uh, halfway between our neighbor's property and our property, so it's gonna be on, it's in the road. It's got this real heavy-duty engineering problem, so they're gonna take those. I'm gonna address those with, with Aaron, 'cause I just got back from Orange Beach. But anyway, that's a deficiency, and we wanna get the, we'd like to see, we'd like to see lift station number five off the, off the books. We'd like to see it, eleven more pump stations on Constance and Arthur. If we did that, we could eliminate all the trenching, all the rotor, and all the gravity sewers, or gravity flow on Constance and Arthur. Uh, we could eliminate the trenching, the roadwork, and it's a real tight area in there. And with my help of the, uh, the engineer from, uh, what's the name of that, the engineer that's doing the gravity work?
Karen?
No, uh, Steve. Elmer, Elmer, their contractor. Estimated that if we could do that, it could be a possibility of a two fifty, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar savings in the contract, if you do some sorting around. Which means could be, uh, fifteen hundred dollars a person, okay, or something like that. I can go, I'd like to, oh, I'm gonna go back to a February meeting, a letter I got from Mr. Kramer. He said, "Do not talk to our engineering because it's gonna increase the cost of days of the job, and then we wanna get this thing run through because I wanna retire in November." I'm sure he'll throw humor in here to make this right, but that, but he, he might apologize because it's a little bit, if it's gonna save everybody a thousand bucks out of their pocket.
Well, if they're willing to do that, it would be good for, that would be good for our contingency fund.
Okay, I'll stop talking, but anyway, uh, that's the only thing I'd like to say, other than I think if you can get Phase One, Phase Two, and Three going, then Bob Burdock would probably go along with Phase Three, and, uh, and somebody, if you could put this together as a full package, that'd be great. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but I don't know most of the developments like this. The more, the better, it's cheaper the cost. For example, Mr. Aaron quoted a nine hundred dollar, nine hundred thousand dollar savings if you combine one and two together. Right, remember that? Now, that probably means why, uh, the guy doing the main, the contractor, Grand Traverse Town contractor, is doing the Phase Two Phases together, and that's why, well, seventeen, one million, seven hundred left on the, on the table, is a big huge thing. That's all technical stuff. I said enough. No, we can go home depending on how you talk about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Okay, is there any more public comment during our public hearing?
Hello, I'm Pam Barrett, B-A-R-R-E-T-T, and I live on thirty-four twelve Poplar Street.
Okay.
And I'm very much in favor of doing this. I think it's been a long time coming, and I appreciate everything you've done to get it here, so let's get it through.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Virginia Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N. I live on six one seven one Prospect. I'm very in favor of the sewers. We need to protect our waterways, and I think you guys have gone to a lot of hard work to get this push through. We're definitely in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment on this public hearing. Anyone else? Sir?
I like Jim's comments about saving money on the project, and that could go in the contingency fund, the money that's, that's being saved, so that was an excellent comment, and, and sometimes when you look at the project, as long as you've looked at it, you know, some new ideas come up, so, uh, hopefully we can save that extra money and put it in the contingency in case we have another problem come up.
Thank you.
Could we give his name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dennis Forsberg.
We have his name, thank you.
They have my name from earlier.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Public hearing is closed. Thank you all for your comments. Uh, our next public hearing is for the twenty twenty-four, uh, budget. Are there any comments on the twenty twenty-four, uh, budget?
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Okay, going once, going twice? Public hearing is closed. No comments. Public comment on agenda items? Any comments on agenda items? Yes, sir?
My name is John Keister, I live out in Blimuth Beach. However, I cut the grass for the property owner at three oh nine six Apple Blossom. There's a property on Grasshead that abuts the back of that property that you need to take a look at, and by driving down Grasshead. The blight there is unbelievable. It's on the east side of the road. In the back, there, he's hauled in two mobile home trailers. One's unlicensed, one has a licensed staple to it. There's a new barn that he's pulled in on a snowmobile trailer. The metal on the roof is falling off, I have to get off my zero turn and pick it up because it blows all over to get the lawn mowed. I've run into skunk, raccoon, possum, mice, and I don't know any rats yet, but I'm sure there's all sorts of vermin living in there. There's also a house that I believe I've heard from the neighbors that he owns two houses to the north, also on the east side of Grasshead, that whatever's hanging in the windows, you know, looks like tattered sheets that are, you know, so sun-faded that are falling down. It's just totally unbelievable, you know, that that property, and it's totally uninhabitable. Um, I don't know why somebody hasn't done something about it previously. Um, this is the fourth time that I've made comments on this. I called Bob's number the last three years in a row, and nothing has been done, so hopefully this time there will be. Um, one other comment. It sure would be nice if the township would pay for the striping of Apple Blossom. Those people zipping in and out of the Indian River Marina, not the residents, but the, you know, Indian River Marina employees and their guests seem to wanna take their half out of the middle of the road. I've been sight-swiped a couple of times. Thank you.
Could you spell your last name, please, John?
K-A-S-E-R.
Hey, John, um, could you see me after the meeting, please?
Sure.
Thank you. And, um, and any other comments on agenda items? Okay, public comment is closed. Approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, uh, motion made by Trustee Vance, seconded by, um, Trustee Pearson. Is there any discussion? I have a discussion, just a second. Just bear with me a minute. I'd like to read something on the record, if I may. Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, from the Tuscoree Township Police Department activities. On five twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, our department responded to a call of a male subject with a large laceration on his arm from a chainsaw. Upon arrival, Officer Anderson applied tourniquets and blood clotting agents to the subject's arm, stopping the bleeding. Male subject was transported, uh, transported to McLaren Bataski by Sheboygan Life Support. Per the attending physician at McLaren, Officer Anderson's action saved this male's subject's life. We have a police department, we spent a lot of money on it, and we saved one person's life. It's worth every penny, in my view. Um, and I just wanted to let the board know, uh, that, uh, the police department and, Kelsey, are you here?
Yes.
And some folks from the library, we had just attended not but a week or two before.
Yeah, I'm sure it was from that, or CPR training.
Right, from CPR and, and how to do a tourniquet. Uh, so it, it, it definitely paid off, so, uh...
You had to put on two tourniquets. One didn't stop the bleeding, the second one was required to completely stop bleeding.
So, um, all in favor of a privy consent agenda?
Uh, I...
Opposed. Okay, old business. Phase One Sewer, uh, Assessment. I move that Special Assessment Resolution Number Four, the residential sewer, Phase One, Special Assessment District, uh, concerning... Excuse me. Uh, in the amount of three million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars be approved by this board. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Yes. I just, I just wanna reiterate how rewarding this project has been, however the board votes. I will respect that vote, but I just wanna let you know I've learned a lot, I've done a lot, I've seen a lot, and it has been so rewarding doing this. This was a community-driven petition right from the start. Um, we were handed this project by the community itself, and we took the ball. We've got numerous funding, um, without that funding, it would not have been possible. The last sewer district had funding from USDA grant and a USDA loan. We got a lot more than that this year. We got that for Phase, uh, One, was USDA, correct?
Yes.
Um, but we got, um, earmarks from Washington DC as well for Phase Two, which we haven't really discussed yet, but the funding has been awarded. Let's see if we can keep it. Um, and I just wanna thank everybody in the community how, how positive this is, this experience has been, and, um, I'm just glad to be here, it's some monument, it's a monument task, let's put it that way, and I'm, I'm just proud to be part of it. That's my discussion.
Any other discussion by the board members? Roll call, please.
Roll call. Uh, Janet Vance.
Yes.
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Janet Delahue.
Yes.
Kim Pearson.
Yes.
Jay Reidsmaar, yes.
The resolution is passed. Uh, board members, um, I move that, uh, the board, uh, pass the resolution authorizing issuance of twenty twenty-four special assessment bonds. This resolution authorizes the issuance of the bonds in the amount not to exceed three million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, or such lesser amount as is outstanding on the special assessment roll at the time of issuance of the bonds. Is there a second?
I second that.
Trustee Vance seconds. Any discussion?
Was that all part of the motion, uh, just a question?
Uh, the, yes. Yes, it was, and it's, I'll, I'll...
No, I've got it.
I'll get it to you after.
No, I've got it.
Right. Uh, per discussion, this is, uh, quite a lengthy document. I know you've all reviewed it. It looks like, uh, we will be paying eighty-seven thousand dollars starting in April of twenty twenty-five.
At one point seventy-five percent interest.
Right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Janet Delahue.
Yes.
Janet Vance.
Yes.
Uh, Jay Reidsmaar, yes. Bob Kramer.
Yes.
Kim Pearson.
Yes.
The resolution is declared adopted. The next up, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Phase One Sewer bids from the engineering firm of Performance Engineering, Inc.
I second that.
Seconded by Trustee Vance. Discussion. Um, as you can see in your documents, there are three contracts. One is called the Gravity Contract, the other one's called the Low Pressure System Contract, and the other one is the Plant Expansion, and, um, Performance Engineering is recommending that we approve, uh, those contractors. Okay, the LPS low bid was from Matt's Underground. Uh, the low bid on the sewer plant was from Grand Traverse Construction. And the Gravity low bid was from Elmer's. Um, if this passes this evening, uh, this will go forward to USDA, um, for formal approval. The recommendation, by the way, is contingent on the funding availability, which means we will not be able to award the contracts until the special assessment process is complete, which we did tonight, so I would think we would be good to go. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Uh, Janet Vance.
Yes.
Janet Delahue.
Yes.
Bob Kramer.
Yes.
Kim Pearson.
Yes.
Jay Reidsmaar, yes.
All right. Motion, uh, the resolution, uh, motions declared adopted. If I could have a few minutes, board members, would that be okay? Um, this is a little emotional for me, so please bear with me. I love Indian River, everybody knows that. I spend a lot of time up here, right here, Constance and Pike. Um, I got extended family all over the place up here, and I know all of you love it as well. But I've been working on this, I think, since, what, twenty seventeen? And, um, I wanted to get this done, and we got it done, but really, this was an entire, entire, uh, community. Uh, I wanna thank the previous board who never faltered, all five of them. Okay, Craig Waldron, and Mike Ridley, and, you know, Sue Fisher, Janet Vance, you were on it, Bobby Velasquez, uh, they never faltered, it was always five to zero. But I really wanna thank the community. Sally, are you here?
No, she's...
She's still here.
Yeah.
I really wanna thank, um, this organization that we've, uh, formed early on called CHIRP, Citizens for, uh, Citizens and Homeowners for Indian River Progress. Nice acronym. But, uh, if you were involved in that process, I would just ask you to please stand. Mr. Murdock, Sally, Jane, are you here? Jane Brown, just, just stand up. And also Martin Melvin is not here today. Is Mr. Burke here? Mr. Burke is not present. Uh, and everyone else that went door to door. These are the folks that made it happen. They knocked on the door. Thank you so very much. I also really wanna thank the Tip of the Mitt Watershed Council, and, um, also Burt Lake Preservation Association. This initial Phase One, Two project was started with eight thousand, five hundred dollars from, uh, BOPA. And, uh, Mr. Burke, as the president, met many times with myself and Tip of the Mitt Watershed Council, and, uh, because of their involvement and all these volunteers, we got it, uh, over the finish line. So there's gonna be bumps along the way, uh, we've all discussed them, uh, we'll work through them, but this is basically Public Health Model One, and I'm just glad that we got this done for the community that we all so much love. So thank you very much. And, uh, one other thing, I gotta thank my battle buddy on the sewer project, Janet Vance. The hours and the hours that we spent going to talk to the... The hours and the hours that we spent going to talk to the health department, going to Alpena, calling on our congressional representatives, our senate representatives. They were just wonderful.
Writing grants and all that.
Especially Congressman Jack Barrettman got us so far, $4.5 million, along with our two senators. But in all fairness, we got great support from our senators, but everything actually came initially out of the House of Representatives. So we appreciate all the support from our congressional delegation. And it truly proves in this day and age that there still can be non-partisanship in this country. And I was very proud of that. I also really got to thank John DeMousse and Cam Cabot. We almost didn't get our permits in time for any kind of construction this summer. EGLE is just overwhelmed. A lot of them are still working from home. And they just pushed them so hard. They got us the permits just so we'd quit yelling and screaming at them. But once we got their attention, they were very good, very professional.
We became the squeaky wheel.
And we really appreciate that. So let's go ahead and move on. Our next item is commercial rehabilitation district agreement. Just bear with me a second, I got to get my notes. We have had Mr., we've had North Star Gardens here many times.
Mr. Jakeway.
Mr. Jakeway talking to us about, just let me get my notes here. Okay, here we go. Mr. Jakeway has asked for commercial rehabilitation district for his improvement project involving the, what do you call it, Michigan Economic Development Corporation?
Yeah.
So I therefore move that we establish commercial rehabilitation district number one from river, the Sturgeon River to the Indian River, and that we set a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the district and approving district boundaries on June 27 at 7:00 PM. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
So to be clear, we're talking about the property adjacent to Straits Highway between the Sturgeon River and Indian River?
And wherever it's owned commercial.
Okay.
So that would include slightly off-street.
Yep.
Because of the Indian, that would include the Indian River overlay district and the Indian River center district. That's approximately about 100 properties.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, and I'll amend my motion to include river to river and those two districts, if I might, Mr. Clerk.
Which two districts?
The Indian River Village Center and the Indian River Village Center overlay. So is there any other further board discussion? Just for clarification.
I do, I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are we picking such a large district to start off with the first project here?
I recommend that we do that based on our training and discussions with NLEA. It's very, it's relatively expensive and time-consuming to do a district. And if somebody came back later and wanted to do a second district, just, let's say, the property across the street, for example, we'd have to go through the whole process over again. It's quite a lengthy process. We have to send out certified letters to those folks and adjacent property owners. And we have to send a certified letter to the county. And even if we were to pass this, the county can say no, I don't think. And it's over. I don't think they're going to say no, but that's the way it works. But we wouldn't make a final decision until after that public hearing.
Would that be at the school? Or where would we have that?
Here.
Here? You think it's big enough? Here?
Public hearing is going to be 6:27.
Yes, yes, sir, at 7:00 PM.
Another question is, how does the DDA fit into this effort? Is this a joint effort, or is this a?
Well, we've spoken to the D- This is a board effort. Only the board can do this, the DDA cannot do it. We have sought their input. And I do want to make clear, I'm glad you brought that up. We have some very, very wonderful volunteers that have formed the, what's the long word? Go ahead.
The Tusker Township Economic Development Citizens Task Force. Yes.
And after hearing NLEA make their presentation, they voted unanimously to recommend to this board. Did they not, Bob?
Yes, they did.
To go river to river.
And so one last question. So each property, once your district is set up, does each property or business that wants to go through this tax abatement process, that they're all done on an individual basis? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So just because we, as we learned from NLEA, just because we establish a district doesn't mean that everybody gets a tax abatement. It doesn't work that way at all. We can establish a district and have no tax abatements. It's done by the board on a case-by-case basis. So in the North Star case, just to do a quick review, in North Star's case, they need what's known as gap funding. And that gap funding is going to come from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I think it's over $1 million, Ron?
What do you think?
How long?
Can be, the tax abatement can be up to 10 years.
Yeah.
The financing can be whatever program MEDC has at the time.
Right, I think they're going to throw in 1.5 million?
1.3, I thought.
Yeah, 1.3. However, the MEDC requires some kind of commitment from the local government, whether that be infrastructure improvement. It doesn't have to be a tax abatement. So this board can set its own criteria for awarding a tax abatement, if they award it at all. They can set the length of time, and they can set the conditions. So this is simply a first step establishing the district. I'm personally excited about it because we have a lot of investor interest now in our community. We've got three major projects getting started at Commerce Park. We have some others on the works over here, the old, right there by the river, the Inbetween. And it would be great to make sure that we continue to send a positive message of smart growth to the investment community. And I think this is one of the first steps to help reviving our downtown. The DDA has just done a tremendous job. I just, it's just so impressive what they did with our streetscape. Whether you agree with some of the bump outs or not, it still is gorgeous, it's lovely. And this is just a logical next step to take care of our citizens and get them the services that we need. I mean, we all know, we need more restaurants. We need more service industries. We have, we're the only place in Sheboygan County that's still growing. We got the VA clinic. I meet people that move, that are moving here, retiring here, like I did, every day. And I just think this is a, personally, I think, I just think it's a logical step. Any other comments?
You know, this is, for every, everything's just math, right? That's what you say if you're an accountant. And I think we're at a place where we have to decide whether we're going to have the same people that are here pay more. And that's difficult for the township to increase that revenue because of headling and other caps. Or you can get more development and let more people pay. And, you know, there's a dearth of housing. We have some exciting projects for housing here. And, you know, I hear all the time that people would rather their kids not have to leave this area in order to get a job that they can support their families on. So the only way to do that is to help businesses who are putting a lot of their own money at risk with a bit of a contribution on our part, which isn't money out of our pocket, it's just a deferment of money coming in. Just like the, like the DDA gets extra money from the county, that increases development in downtown. Same with this.
Did you want to mention about the schools?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sure that the school looks forward to the day when we have a $6 million project, taxable value of $3 million, and another $60,000 of tax revenue, that they don't have to pay for a vote in order to get that permanent annual increase coming in in addition to, you know, the fact that properties in the area also appreciate. But, you know, this is, this is a sort of a shot in the arm along with the, you know, the other projects that are coming online, like the Inbetween, like the potential housing at Commerce Park. Could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax.
It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that I learned in our training that the schools will get the increased value immediately. There is no tax abatement, isn't that correct, for schools?
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Okay. So they're going to get an immediate benefit if this project, if, let's say, the North Star project gets there. Is there any further discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please. Kramer.
Here. Yes.
Vance.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Delahaye.
Yes.
Rees-Meier, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, set additional budget hearing. We did have a budget hearing today. We had a problem with the newspaper where we had a wrong time in there at 6:30. We did run a correction the next day. But board members, I would feel more comfortable if we had yet another budget hearing to allow for more input before we pass any kind of budget at the end of the month. So I move that we hold an additional public noticed budget hearing at 7:00 PM on June 27. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Jan supports. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is broadband. And I want to turn it over to trustee Vance to introduce our guests.
Yep, we have Marilyn and Joan. They're both here from Charter. They're expanding the broadband in the area. They want to speak to us today to let us know where their maps are, that they're going to be doing that, and what the prospective timeline is going to be, I understand. So we're going to give it to Marilyn and Joan. Thank you for coming today. What's that?
Joan Mowrich. It's my musical chairs. I got one. We'll just make sure it connects there.
I've been talking with these nice ladies for a couple of years, and it's finally nice to put a name with a face. And thank you for coming.
Indeed, thank you so much for having us.
I think one of you lives way up in the UP?
Joan lives in Wakefield, near Ironwood, our Ironwood office.
Oh, good, then you've had a long drive. I'm as far away as still be in Michigan.
But another time zone. And I'm just outside of Grand Rapids, so.
Wow, that's a long way. Thank you for coming.
You're certainly welcome. We're happy to be here. We'll just get that up and running, and then I'll, I'll start Carter.
Sure.
Always got a code in there.
So one of the things why they're doing this is, I want to explain to everybody that, I think it was about a year ago or so, there was a letter-writing campaign going on to help decide who was going to get what district and help from the state and things like that. Charter was going after our area. And I said, we're going to get onto this. So I contacted a few of our movers and shakers in the area, like the police department, like the library, like different of the school.
There we go.
Different people that would have a vested interest in making sure that we increase the broadband in this area. And lo and behold, here we are today. So that's how it started.
Yes. So thank you very much. As you mentioned, Supervisor Kramer, we've been, I don't even know how long we've been talking, five, six years at least. And trustee Vance had invited Joan and I to come to this meeting because we actually have a lot going on in the county and specifically in your township. And we have some really good news to share. Sorry, it feels weird to have my back to everybody, but this is the format, so I want to be cognizant of that, so.
If you'd like to.
No, it's okay, it's okay. So my name is Marilyn Passmore. I'm the State Director for Charter Communications Government Affairs. So I manage the government affairs relationships for Charter, otherwise known as Spectrum, for the whole state. We cover as far north as the Keweenaw Peninsula, all the way to Monroe and back again. And we're in over 950 communities across the state. So we have a big territory. Joan Mowrich is our Government Affairs Manager from North Michigan. She covers all of the UP and northern lower Michigan. So she does travel below the bridge occasionally and visits with local leaders such as yourselves. And we love this part of our job, so we're thrilled to be here. A little bit about Charter, you can advance to the next slide, Joan. Just, not that you haven't heard of us, but you'll hear me say Charter and Spectrum. I'm a 23-year Charter employee before we were ever called Spectrum. But Charter's our legal name, Spectrum is the brand. So just for background, you'll see our trucks are branded Spectrum. We have 101,000 US employees. And all of our call centers are in the continental United States. We're very proud of that. We're very, very proud of the fact that about 12% of our, all of our employees are US veterans. We're also equally proud of our veteran workforce.
They all speak good English.
They certainly do. They certainly do. And that was an initiative we took about 10 years ago in response to customer feedback. We brought all those call centers onshore. The last count that I heard, we have about 87 US-based call centers. They are all virtual, they can all interchange, connect. You could be talking to someone in Vancouver, Washington, San Antonio, Texas, or Walker, Michigan. I mean, it just depends on the time of day and the coverage. On an ongoing basis, about 500 million devices connected to our network at any one time. We operate in 41 states, and we are just growing exponentially. 57 million addresses that we pass. When we say pass, we mean we go by the door. But 32 million take the service. So there's still a disconnect between folks that could take our service, and maybe they take someone else, or maybe they don't feel comfortable using internet, or they're not going to do their banking online. So we have programs in place to address those gaps. And over 875,000 miles of network. Go to the next slide, Joan. In Michigan, we're about 1,700 employees across the state. Again, scattered from as far north as Houghton to Monroe. We have offices, you know, in Alpena, in West Michigan where I am, and Jones and Ironwood, as I mentioned. So we are your local traditional cable provider, but we've also- So we are your local traditional cable provider, but we've also morphed over the years and really become a broadband connectivity company. And we are now the number one U.S.-based Internet company in the country. I'm really proud of that. $20 an hour starting pay. 2023, we extended our network to 34,000 additional homes. On an ongoing basis, we build out to about 20,000 to 25,000. And that extra 10,000 came from the RDOF program that I'm going to talk about here in a minute. And this is a very capital and people-intensive business. It takes a lot of people, and it takes a lot of funding to do what we do. So just as an example, hit the numbers for the accountant, $305 million capital investment last year. Just staggering numbers. And so when we, we build, we build, we build, we expand, and we grow. And so Janet and I have had those conversations, she's had those conversations with Joan, and I'll get to that letter writing campaign here in a moment. You go ahead, Joan. So this next slide shows our existing network in gray, and where we're going with the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund program under the FCC is shown in royal blue. So 875,000 miles of existing network. Now, two years ago, that number was 800. That's how much we've built. We are just going gangbusters. We are adding through the FCC program another 115,000 miles of network. It's just a massive program. So when I mentioned 101,000 employees as an example, two years ago, we were at 80,000 employees. That's how quickly we've grown. And we're, we're adding again and again. So I mentioned the $20 an hour, because people are listening. If there, have someone that interested in a career with a fast-growing technology company that is expanding and has opportunities in everything from cybersecurity, and some of the people that work in our cybersecurity come from the FBI, believe it or not, and work for us. We've got just a stellar team in all of those departments, so really excited about that growth. Go ahead, Joan. So under the RDOF program, this is a Trump initiative, it came out in 2019. It was ahead of, any of us knew anything about COVID, pandemic, things of that nature. But the FCC set aside funding for companies to expand via what's called the Rural Digital Opportunity Program. And that funding was to go to unserved census blocks. Every other funding program had been earmarked like that, but that's never how they went out. And what ended up happening was the funding was deployed, but it never got to those really rural pockets. So under this program, Charter stepped up, said, we want to be part of it. We received a $1.56, or pardon me, $1.26 billion package from the FCC. We're investing $5 billion. That's how big this project is. We are building all fiber. There are other awardees participating in this program that are in your township. They can choose to build fiber if they want to, it's not required. That's how we're building. What we're doing is all fiber in the home, and it's one gig down by 500 up. So just for background, you've had gig available since 2019. We actually launched our residential gig service in Traverse City with Congressman Bergman. He was there to cut the ribbon at our Traverse City store. So that's been in place now for five years. But this, this new initiative is all fiber, which is really exciting. Most of our network is actually already fiber. We also always remind everyone that we don't have contracts, we don't have modem fees, and there's no data caps. So as I travel around the state, and I'm in some really rural pockets of the state, and people are telling me, Marilyn, I'm paying $70 for eight meg, and you're telling me I can get 300 as you're starting for $50? I'm like, yep, and no contracts. So think about for seasonality. People come in, people come off. They don't have to sign a contract. In fact, we will actually buy out some of the contract if they come to be a Spectrum customer.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
If I understand it correctly, you have a, you're one of the few cable companies that have a vacation program?
Yes, a seasonal program.
Could you talk about that, because we have a lot of seasonal people.
Joan's probably more well-versed in seasonality, but not to put you on the spot, but essentially you can put your program, your services on seasonal for a lower rate for the time that you're away, and not have to return equipment, and not have to pay a startup fee when you come back. Do you remember off the top of your head roughly how much it is a month?
I'm not so close to 20 dollars, I'm sorry.
She used to be, sorry. I think it's like $20.
If you are in a Charter area where you're snowboarding to, as my parents would, we just, we transfer the service to you.
Yeah. And with our new Zumo product, which is a joint venture with Comcast, it's a little digital box that comes preloaded with all the apps. You can stream through that program, because we've realized people aren't necessarily taking traditional set-top box cable service. The Zumo can go with you. So if you go to Florida and you have Wi-Fi, you can connect your Zumo box down there, just as an example.
But would it have to be Charter?
No, not through the Zumo box. You just have to have connectivity.
Wow.
So it's very cool. It's a, it's a relatively new product. We just got it as employees. And we're, Joan was a tester, because she's super techie and loves to test products, but it's got a voice remote. So my grandkids love that, because they're like SpongeBob, and it comes on, you know, or you can Tiger's Baseball, and it tells you what channel. So anyway, just a lot of, a lot of cool features with that. Anyway, so our, all of our build, whether it's this program or another program I've just talked about, it's all fiber. That's all we're building now.
Question, so it's fiber optics?
Yes.
Can you tell us the difference between fiber optics and just general cable in terms of performance? You keep mentioning it, which is good.
Yeah, I mentioned it. Certainly. So there, most of our network already has fiber, but the, the capacity is, and life of it is longer. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to be the best explaining it. But long and short of it is, we can actually push the network further with a fiber build. So for example, as we're building in rural communities, we're finding we have to go further to get to the homes, and we can actually push the network. So say, you know, in a rural, more rural footprint, someone has a 900-foot, 1,500-foot driveway, we can still connect them at that distance. And that's one of the advantages for us, but it's also scalable in the speed. Now, our existing network, we are evolving the network, we'll be at a big symmetric within, by the end of '25, wherever we are anyway. So most of what we have is already fiber, and I bring it up so much because there's can be an assumption that cable is outdated, and it's just, I mean, we wouldn't be the number one Internet provider if that was the case, right? Does that answer your question? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Joan. So these are the companies that won funding in your township. So in purple is the federal funding that was awarded to Electric Co., but I believe that's Prespilin Gas. In the teal is Mercury Broadband. And then that lime green up in the northeast portion is Charter Spectrum. And I'm very pleased to announce that our build in your township is complete, and all services are active. So we brought a copy of the press release that we put out this week, quoting Congressman Bergman and Senator DeMose and Representative Cavett. They all weighed in. And we're very excited to announce that our portion of that project is already complete in your township as of this week.
Yay. Three new beaches up and running now.
Not yet. That's next.
One thing, I live north of town, off of Eagles Nest Road. We live on a private lane. My neighbors are like a quarter mile down, my next-door neighbors. They have been trying to live off of hotspots and running to town and things like that to use the Internet, because she does a lot of online shopping.
Sure.
She does her so well. They signed up, they've got fiber optics now, and they are so happy.
Oh, great.
And they were like applauding when it was going down our lane. And they says, you mean it's going to come down just for us?
Yes.
It's coming down just for you.
So this program, the RDOF stands for Rural Digital Opportunity, and that's the program that was launched before COVID. The funding, again, was only earmarked for unserved census blocks. There was supposed to be a second round for underserved, but then COVID happened, right? So some of that funding got, got set aside. So there's information there, but I also brought some handouts for anybody that's interested. But that, you have two programs with Charter that are happening in your township, so let me jump ahead. So next slide, Joan. So going ahead, we applied last year, Joan, myself, and Derek on my team, and we worked some crazy hours. You were talking about grant writing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. So Michigan had a competitive grant program for broadband, 238 million in capital funds. It was for internet, high-speed Internet or last-mile projects. We applied for 36 projects, so in 36 different counties. It was 28,000 documents. The average grant was 835 pages with 45 attachments. And we worked hours and hours and weekends, and yeah. Anyhow, we were ultimately awarded nine grants. We accepted five. The reason for that was there was some additional funding that came out around the same time, but then cut down some of those opportunities, and they just weren't viable. But one of the awards that we won is in Sheboygan County. So go into your, your comment, trustee Vance. Joan, myself, and another manager, we were, as we like to call it, dialing for dollars. We were calling all of our, our legislative contacts, our local community contacts, our county contacts, hey, would you guys write a letter? And Janet was wonderful, just got the, you got the library trustee board, you had, as you mentioned, the fire chief, police, I can't even name them all, there were so many letters that came in.
And thanks to Sharon Lang.
Sharon was fantastic with, with the county, and Jeff as well, with county administrator. They all weighed in, they wrote a really good letter. And, and what was helpful for us, because the letters tell the story, right? When you're applying to the state, they have to understand that this is something people really are behind and want to see. And I'm very proud to say, as a team, we led our company on the letter-writing campaign. We just smoked every other team across our company, which we're very competitive, so that, that was fun. Other, Joan would call me, I got 32 letters. I'm like, oh, my goodness. So it was fun. Okay, so the broadband grant program, we applied in March of last year. Preliminary awards were announced in June. Midsummer, no fault of the Michigan Broadband Office, the FCC came out with another layer of funding for a different program that essentially kneecapped that broadband grant program. So they had to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, kind of, what can we reapply? So there's a second round underway right now. We have eight awards in that program. So we're actually one of the largest winners in the state. So if you can go to the next slide, here's how this impacts your community. So little brown dots, this is actually the award that we won in Sheboygan County. Five townships are positively impacted. Aloha, Burt, Inverness, Kohler, Mullet, and Tuscarora. We applied for over 3,000 addresses. Like when everything was all said and done, we received 669. And again, some of that is, you know, the maps are as good as the day they're made, other companies are building, other programs are coming through, and there was quite a bit of time that it took to review these, these awards. So project cost is 4.1 million, three million of which is being put out by our company. We wanted to show the state that, you know, we have the capital, the experience, and the people to build this, and they agreed. And all grants have to be completed by the end of '26. So where it is now is we have done what we call the walkout. We've gone out and looked at the condition of the poles, looked at the rights of way in all the communities. We've done the design, and we've started applying for permit. And one of you had mentioned something about permits. And we are, we have to wait for the permits to come in. So we would expect, if everything goes well, permits can take anything, anywhere from nine to 12 months. That's why it takes so long to build broadband. We have to attach to the poles, and the, and the pole owners are, are getting many requests as well, because there's a lot going on in this space, right? So we expect that we would be starting construction the first part of the year, provided all the permits start rolling in. And you'll see, in addition to all your other projects, you're going to see a lot of activity. So Joan, go to the next slide, because this actually zooms in on the impact within the township. But you can see most of this is along that Grandview Beach area. But here's what's important about that. As we build, whether it's the Ardoff program, the Robyn program, prior broadband or grant programs, we pass homes that might have service. They all have access to it as well, because we have to go from A to B to C to D. And maybe the D is the only address that doesn't have service, and B, you know, B and C do, they get access to that all-fiber network as well. So it actually creates multiple options for residents, which is really exciting. And just for background, on average, we're building about 40% more than awarded as we go. So it's quite, it's quite an expansive project. So that's as good of a view as I could zoom in for the, our impact in your township. But lastly, I brought this, and I brought handouts of this last slide. Can you, can you advance it, Joan? In case anybody wants a copy. This is our rural broadband site. It's interactive. You can scan the QR phone, or code, pardon me, with your phone, it'll take you right to that site. Put in your address. If you're in a serviceable area, you'll already get advanced to the sales site. If you're in our build area, you'll have an option to sign up for text or email updates. And if you're not in our service area, I believe it'll tell you, Charter doesn't serve this area, and here's a list of other providers. So at the bottom is the interactive Robyn Grant map. Those addresses are not yet in our broadband site, because we're waiting on the state. So some of that's going to take some time. But folks can go to that site, zoom into the county, and have a look, and you can actually put your address in and see if you're in that Robyn broadband grant built site. So thank you again for all the great support. Really, really appreciate it. We couldn't have done it without that, because that, like I said, that really tells the story.
Yeah. I'm just glad we can service some of the, as a small part of you guys servicing, the areas that were having difficulties, and I'm glad we're getting it better, because there's a lot of people out there that's having problems, you know, getting into the Internet. And you have to be there now, you know, you have to have that Internet access. Everything's on the Internet now. So even to call, like, for example, my mom has a phone, Ron, set it up for her, that has, because she's hard of hearing, has the caption. You have to be on the Internet in order to get that.
To make that work, yeah.
So it's very important for even our disabled people to have that access. So thank you very much for.
You're very welcome.
focusing on our community.
Yeah, I have Charter and the same phone, and I use that phone, and I couldn't do it without the Internet. What's that?
I rest my case.
Say what?
So anyway, to close, we're very excited to be here. We're, we're building, you know, I skipped over a little bit of a federal program that we're involved in, but we're act, we, our award was in 33 Michigan counties. I'm on the rural broadband team as, in, in just to my full-time job. And I love, because this is such an exciting project to be part of. We're actively building in 17 counties, and we're just going great guns. So you see our crews around, and remember, all those U.S.-based employees, you know, people do stop and talk to them, and hey, are you going down my street? And they're just as excited to be part of building, you know, and really transforming rural America. We're very proud of that effort. So thanks again for the opportunity.
Well, thank you so much for coming all this way.
You're welcome.
And you too, Joan. I appreciate it.
Board members, thank you very much, ladies, for coming. Great to finally meet you all, and thank you for all the great work. Board members, I was so overwhelmed with the, the sewer projects. I neglected one item on commercial rehabilitation project service agreement. As I told you, this is a very difficult, time-consuming process, and as an army of one, I need help. And I would like to move that we contract up to $1,000 with an LEA to help us with this commercial rehab project. And I understand, even though it's for the whole street, you know, river to river, that Mr. Jake Way will reimburse us that $1,000. So I would like to move that we enter, that you authorize the supervisor to enter into a commercial rehabilitation project service agreement not to exceed $1,000.
I'll second that.
Janet seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Blight, I'll turn it over to trustee Vance.
Okay, we have some areas in the township that has been a constant blight problem. It's on King Road and Parky Road. It's owned by the same property owner. I went out there with the chief the other day and looked at, and I mean, my jaw dropped. It's bad. They do not live in our township. They live in another county, but they're using our township for their dumping ground. It's, it's a hoarding situation. Vehicles, mobile homes, open septic tanks, I mean, you could fall right into it.
I mean, you could fall right into it. I thought it was an open well. I called the health department, they went out there, and they said, nope, it's a septic tank. It's okay. It's, it's, it's bad. It's pretty bad. It's on Parky and King Road. We have received a court order from 2013. There was a court hearing, and we won that, to clean it up. And they were supposed to clean it up, and they never did. Township did not follow through on it with no fault of anybody's. It's just one of those things that fall between the cracks. The court order by our lawyer is still in effect. We can only, if, if we decide to take control of this project and have it cleaned up, we can only remove what was there at the time of the court order, which thankfully, we have pictures of all that. And so that has already been marked. We've had, Chief Gordon has taken the lead on this, but he's on vacation. That's why I'm reporting for him, and I'm kind of working with him. And anyway, our lawyer said that the court order is still in effect, but it won't be for long if we don't do something. The property owner actually even signed a letter of agreement that he would clean up the place, but he has not. I think eleven years is a long time to wait.
She is.
So the thing with this, we had, we have an estimate here from Ron's Auto and Wrecker Service. They do heavy equipment removal and things like that. And they have agreed to take care of some of the things that were there on both properties. It's going to cost an estimate of nine-eight-hundred dollars and eighty-one cents, excuse me, nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, excuse me, no cents. And so I think it's, it's time to relieve the people that live near there of this situation. We were out there, there was just, it's unbelievable. It's just all these vehicles, old county road equipment is out there. I don't know where it came from. I don't know why it's there, but he, evidently the person that owns this property thinks that that's important, but it's just going to rot. Everything, there's a semi-truck that's just a few feet off the side of, of King Road that's probably only eight feet off the side of the road, and it's been sitting there all this time. The tires have run it off on one side. It's time we do something. The people that live in this township do not deserve this kind of thing happening. We have the power to do something. I'm not quite sure what the process is yet. I, I will find out. I do know that whatever costs that we incur, we can bill the property owner, but I do not know how that happens. I know it goes on their taxes, but how many years they would have to pay it, I don't If there's a lien on their property, I'm not sure. I'm sure there would probably have to be a lien.
They have thirty days to pay the bill, and then it goes as tax liens.
Tax lien. And so with the equipment that's still there, that is not included with this court order, the chief is already citing them weekly, the newer stuff that's been dumped there. I mean, there's five Subaru cars, not licensed, registered. Nothing is licensed or registered. I mean, heavy equipment, semi-trucks, big trailers, a mobile home that is falling apart.
Front-end loader, backhoe, low boy.
All kinds of stuff. It's just, it's just ridiculous.
So would you like to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion for us to start moving the process forward. This is just the first step. This estimate is just the first step. There's going to be more, but I can, I can fill you in when we have our June twenty-seventh meeting on where we're at, that we need more information about the lien and what exactly the process is, and I can, and I can work with our lawyer about that.
So what's your motion?
My motion is to move forward with this project, and I just want permission to, I guess, call the lawyer and get things rolling with liens and things like that, and then...
And authorize?
And authorize this to start, but this won't start until after July first. He can't even do it. So I'll have to go on the next budget. There's no budget money in this budget for this year, so I'd have to go on next year's budget.
I have a question.
Hang on, is there a second?
I'll support it.
All right, now, discussion, please.
So is this stuff, was this grandfathered, all this stuff here that you have listed here, that's almost ten grand, was this not grandfathered in, this stuff here?
That was a court order to have him remove it, and he has not removed it.
She.
She, he, whatever, yeah, property owner, they have not removed it. They were ordered to move, remove it in 2013. They have not done so. In fact, they've added to it.
So this was, this is prior to 2013? There's more stuff that's been added, like the Subarus and all that? Because I don't see that stuff on there.
No, that's not on there. Those are the things that we are, this is the 2013 vehicles that we're looking at. The, the things that are being cited are the newer things that we're not going to remove. We're going to give him an opportunity to remove. If, if he doesn't, then that will get added in too.
Okay, I just want to clear a question.
Any other discussion?
I just want to make sure I get the motion down properly here. I'm going to repeat it. Move forward with project plan to clean up blight at Parky and King Road led by Janet Vance.
At a cost of nine-thousand-eight-hundred.
At a cost of nine-thousand-eight-hundred.
Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make my blight comments later. Okay, public comment, please, three minutes. Step right up.
Hello, I'm Allison Studer.
Hi, Allison.
This has really nothing to do with what was on your agenda, but people in this town need to know. There, it's about 5G cell towers. They are, there are actually nineteen towers already in Indian River area. One is being built behind the school right now tomorrow. Another is being proposed at forty-six-eleven Vera Eaton Court behind Michael's Tavern, Danan, which is zero-point-five miles from the one they're building at the school. It is also less than one mile from one that's already built at Coa Park. This is getting ridiculous. On June nineteenth, another one will be requested at eighteen-sixty-five South Straits Highway behind Rensby's Drilling. The Telecommunications Act of nineteen-ninety-six was written by Bell South Communications Corporation. It states that you, the people, cannot deny these towers for health purposes. Why is that? That shouldn't be, that should be the first thing our government does. There were over eleven thousand studies done that shows the harmful health effects, but money went over our health. Parents should know that children have thinner skulls, and research shows that these children's developing brains, eyes, and bone marrow absorb this radiation three to ten times deeper than adults. We are doing our children to death. Period. And these studies show it, that WHO classified wireless radio frequency radiation as a class two-B cardigan in 2011. Wireless was never pre-market tested for children's safety. It is not a food, drug, chemical, and a long-term health risk assessment was never done by the FDA, CDC, and CI, or the EPA. In 2021, the U.S. Supreme Court of Appeals in Washington said the FCC needed to update their thirty-year-old regulations before continuing 5G. They have never done it. Us, our children, grandchildren are getting picks for the government yet again. Please go to the zoning board meeting and say the towers are not needed. Go to commissioners' meeting, or email, or both, and tell them a resolution to cease and desist 5G rollout in Sheboygan County until the FCC reviews all of the eleven thousand studies and updates their over-thirty-year-old regulations. It also is as bad on wildlife, trees, and plants as it is for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody has some questions, I have some information if you would like it.
Hello, my name's Patrick McGinnis. During the May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four Tuscarora Township regular meeting, I was speaking during public comment portion of the meeting. As I was explaining the harassments and lies told about me, Janet Vance, the current board member, once again disrupted my comments. This action was just one of many times that Janet Vance, as, as a sitting member of the Tuscarora Township Board, has violated Title Eighteen of the United States Code, Section Two-Forty-Two. It appears that the truth does not sit well with Janet Vance. It is hard for me to recall the number of times that Janet has walked out of township meetings just because she could not face the truth and confronted with her lies, actions, and statement. The truth is so foreign to Janet that she has no problem lying to the police or even sending letters to the Sheboygan County prosecuting attorney that are less than accurate. This is what Janet does when someone will not get on board or get out of the way. Janet has no problem telling people that I am paranoid and that I am a heavy pot and drug user. Janet seems to want nothing more than to get me thrown in jail because I keep calling out her lies. Janet also seems to be upset because she claims that I speak at every meeting. This is another lie that Janet likes to tell, but even if it was true, it is the right of everyone to speak at public meetings. This is a right that Janet Vance has used in the past, before she became a current board member, and still uses to this day. This right of free speech does not come with the requirement that you only say nice things about board members and tell them that they are great and wonderful. In closing for the record, I do not use pot or any type of illegal drugs. Thank you for your time.
Public comment. Order. Yes, sir.
Couple, I hope, simpler things. Tom O'Branovic, sixty-four thirty South Street.
How you doing, Ma'am?
O B R A N O V I C.
O V I C.
Yep. Thank you. So just, two things. I've gone South Street, and obviously, it's the main road that goes to the public beach during the summer, one of the main, you know, that people take. And probably thing that you've heard over and over again about the speeding. But one possible recommendation that I would have is, I know they don't always work perfectly, but, you know, we have both adults and kids that have a tendency to speed, some purposely, some just because they're not thinking, and there's a long stretch, that if we could get a stop sign, or the, the speed limit signs that has your speed type of thing underneath that just reminds people that as they're going down the road, they know that they're going forty-five instead of twenty-five in residential area. Some of those can work, that, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to get everybody to stop speeding, but it's a reminder for definitely those people that don't even realize they're going that fast. There's, there's a lot of kids, I have grandkids that come, there's a lot of kids along the way, and I know speeding's very, very hard to take care of. But if you would consider that type of application, you know, that may help. Also, I don't know if you could do this on a county road, but, and I don't know the situation with Pat and Gary's and the whole rogue thing at the end, and who owns what and all that. I know that was, maybe it's all settled. I don't, I don't know that. But obviously, I think right now it's a two-lane road on the right as you go from the lake, let's say, up to there. And a lot of people do get confused there. So if an application of like a yellow line in the middle there that would show that this is a two-lane road, and this might be a county thing, but if you could help facilitate that, that way the people would get the idea that, you know, there's a, there's a stop bar there, but they didn't put a yellow line that could go down at least where the little boulevard is there. And I think it would help people determine that it's a two-lane road and they turn into there. That's all I hear.
Public comment, please.
Step up.
Beth Henderson. Oh, was somebody else there? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. She's not.
I'm sorry. I didn't see her. I was at the budget meeting, and I was a little taken back by somebody on the board who said, just take it away from the parks. You guys had to find, I can't remember how much money. You had to find, you know, X amount of dollars so you could budget. And I was a little disappointed that she, or the person said, take it from the parks when you've already taken the seventy-nine thousand dollars to buy the truck from the parks? And at one point in your meetings, it was supposed to come out of the Capital Improvement Fund? And I'm just wondering if there's any way the board can reconsider giving the parks back some of the money for the truck? Because the truck is used for everybody, not just parks. So I think it would be worth your while to maybe look into the, taking some of it out of the capital improvement and putting it back into the parks fund so they can do what they need to do too.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. She's our newest perks. Thank you very much. No, really, thank you for stepping up. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm sorry. No, you're fine. Good evening. My name is Christina Moutrie, M-O-U-T-R-I-E. Husband and I moved up here in 2012. He's since passed. I moved away and come back because I love Indian River.
Sorry for your loss.
Just like, thank you. Anyway, coming back, I am really excited to see, I'm a little nervous here. I'm really excited to see specifically, this is a downtown area, the business people are ramping up their business, cutting weeds, making it desirable. Granted, I am not looking for a Harbor Spring kind of a thing. It's, three things that concern me are the Aurora Cigar Lounge at this point. If we go out there, it looks, you know, like blight. I'm kind of going backwards, Mr. Kramer, a little bit. The second thing that, that annoys me is that next to Northland, the Northland County Insurance Company, he owns that, and I don't want to step on anybody, I'm sorry, but he owns that little former dairy place that's now like a garage sale place that looks awful. There's stuff just junked in there, and it's just not kept up, right? And what was it, there were three things. I'm sorry, I can't remember, but those two specifically, and, you know, everybody, we're having company up, and you want to be proud of your downtown. Hey, let's go for a walk and enjoy. All the people that have made such a lovely improvement in this town, and it, it has such a potential, this little Indian River village, to be, just updated, or, you know, take a gallon of paint and paint your business, or cut the weeds or whatever. But my two main concerns are that little dairy place down there that's a garage sale and the Aurora Cigar Lounge. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Supervisor and board, I congratulate you on phase one. It was a long time coming. Phase two's next, phase three's beyond. My wife likes to say that Indian River has two main streets. We have Twenty-seventh the main drag, and the Indian River is our other main street. So when we look to expand the DDA, when we look to do things to benefit the community, I think it's incredible that we can all come together one way or another. People in this room pay a lot of federal taxes, we pay a lot of state taxes, we pay a lot of local taxes. Have a nosebot, we slept on both sides, so they all bring in politicians in here. Well, we had to, because guess what? They don't know who Indian River is. They really don't. And it's our tax money. And I've said it before, the infrastructure money that's available, the things that are happening, we need to get our fair share. Okay? We may not agree on the political sides of things, but at the end of the day, the fresh water that we require to have as a community crosses all economic and all political specters. It has to happen that way. Clean water is the only reason we exist here. We are a resort community town. We are a resort community town. You fish here, you ski here, you boat here, you live here. And during a couple of winters, I have to say that after COVID-19, living here, I began to channel Jack Nicholson in The Shining. So, there have to be some things to do up here. And as we've all heard, everyone loves our main street. We have to find a way to continually improve that. I'm going to call out a few friends of mine, Scott Montide, Eminem, and Pat Weldon. We all got together with Doug and we installed the drinking fountain, bottle filler, and dog bowl that you see up here by the chamber. We did that, we met with Doug, three days later, it was operational. And we did it, so that's kind of cool, you know?
And I was going to thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So, I had donated a number of years ago, it's at her Scott's Warehouse, I said enough is enough, so we got it done in three days. And that's the community coming together. There's no, we all did it voluntarily, didn't cost the township a nickel, and we got it all done. So, we're going to do more of that and we're going to see more of that. I think we're going to continue to see more community involvement and we'll entertain more politicians, because we have some people behind the scenes that have done pro bono work on Oliver Schwab in DC, have done a great deal for us. We tee them up. We're going to have a group of fundraisers up here for everyone. We're going to have Senator, Chuck Bourbon's going to be here, we're going to have DeMose here, we're going to have Cabot here. We're going to promote, you know, as much as we can so that they know who Indian River is. So, thank you for getting shovels to the ground. Sally and I talked about it at one of the meetings, it was important to get a shovel in the ground because we need to stay in that funding cycle. So, thank you all for passing it. Certainly appreciate it.
Public comment, please. Any more public comments? Public comment is closed. Board comment. If I may, board, I do want to recognize, and I didn't, I said Mr. Murdoch, but I didn't say about Patty Murdoch. Patty, would you please stand? Patty Murdoch, on her own, virtually, got all the petitions for phase three.
Oh, for phase three, yeah.
As well as helping us with the other phases. And I just want to thank you for that. We got a million dollars because of that. I just hope that the future board follows through and as Mr. Murdoch said, you've got to talk to the politicians and you got to get on their cycle. And there's a cycle coming up and...
Right, you can do whatever.
Everybody, exactly.
It's our money.
So, I have some other comments, but I'll turn it over to other board members first.
I just want to say that the road commission has been doing a very good job with the roads. People are really happy that they're getting gravel on their roads and they're begun the brine process, so that has really helped as well. The dry season coming up, so I'm excited for what we're doing here in Indian River and I appreciate you guys coming and supporting us and keeping us accountable. Thank you. Hope you all have a safe and fun summer.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about how great it is to see so many people here tonight. You know, there's the saying that many hands make light work. Many eyes on what's happening in the township help us come up with better decisions and promotes better information for us to make those decisions with, so I thank you all for your participation. I really want to thank again, although they're almost gone, all the hard work that people did last fall to plant bulbs. They were beautiful this spring and now we've transitioned over to the lovely planter boxes with the petunias in them from the women's club, so those are beautiful. So, I dug out watering this morning. Lots of fun things happening in the community, lots of development. I think it's wonderful and I appreciate everyone who has participated to help make it happen. That's all I got.
Jay? Oh, come on, Jay.
I'll leave my time to you, bud.
Okay, all right, then I'll say it. Jay, thank you for personally spearheading the road brining. He's been out on the road for two days making sure that the brining was done right. We spent $50,000 on gravel, that's why brining was delayed. We gave him so much money, they couldn't lay all the gravel in time. But it's been a long time coming, Jay, I want to thank you for that. And he's probably saved us, I know last time he saved us at least 10 grand, because he's very particular as an engineer on how that brining should be done. And that's good, because that saved us a lot of money, so I wanted to thank Jay for that.
We hope so. The roads were in excellent shape too, thanks to the gravel that was put down there. Every road was well groomed by the County Road Commission. In addition, obviously, put the gravel down, so there wasn't a road that we went down that wasn't in great shape.
That's Rob and Matt and his crew and we thank the road commission for that. I am looking forward to line striping downtown and that will include addressing South Avenue a bit. I think we're, where's Ron? Ron had stepped up. We should be getting that done in the next few weeks. We're just waiting on information from the contractor. I also want to let you know that the NABNOI work start is supposed to start tomorrow, so there will be some inconvenience, Mr. Murdoch, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Hopefully, they'll be done by Friday, paving that small strip of road that goes from Old Onaway to the boat launch, so people don't have to hit the potholes with their beautiful new boats. I also want you to let you know that coming up here, not this weekend, but the next weekend, is the Chamber of Commerce's old-fashioned days. So, I hope you'll be able to do that, to partake in that. Also, I want to talk about turtles. So, I don't want to disclose where it is, but there are a number of turtle nesting sites along the Indian and Little Sturgeon River. Please be careful. It's a violation of federal law to even touch them. So, they're very, very sensitive. We have some of them marked off, not all of them, so be careful. Yeah, take your kids to see it, but watch but don't touch. Also, I want to talk about blight. I've always been big on blight, so has trustee Vance in this entire board and our police chief. I have personally cited or worn over a dozen just in the past four days. We are not looking to get the one-timer that couldn't make it up here on time, right? So, in one case, I called a gentleman that I know and I said, "Hey, man, you got to cut your grass, because we're enforcing the tall grass ordinance." He says, "Well, Bob, I'll be up here Saturday, I promise." Well, gosh, I guess he made a special trip and cut it anyway, or his neighbor did. And Mr. Spawn is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, he dug in and helped his neighbor and I, that's just wonderful. I would have done it if my shoulder hadn't have been so bad. I really was going to, because I live on the next street over, but I really appreciate that. In regards to some of the places that were discussed, I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but down here, there is considerable legal and enforcement activity and there is very aggressive enforcement action on gray shot. One other thing I want to mention, please don't put out speed signs. Don't put up speed limit 10 miles an hour, because the road commission will just take them down and if you do it again, you'll get cited. So, you know, I appreciate you wanting to slow people down. We all want to slow people down, but we have to do it the legal and correct way. We are going to move the radar over to Prospect because of, you know, the little radar sign that says, you know, slow down. That was brought to our attention by neighbors. We're going to have it over there. And I think the next place we're going to have it is South Avenue, from what I hear. I'll ask the chief about that. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that at some point. I just want to remind people with the Fourth of July coming up, our fireworks on the Fifth of July, please don't drive down the street unless you live there where it says, "Do not enter," because we're having the largest fireworks in northern Michigan. We've met all our goals, thanks to the business community and the sponsorships and individual donations from people. This thing is going to be huge. It's going to be 30 minutes. There'll be another dance party, family dance party at the beach. It's going to be set to music once again. Last year, I think, was 17 and a half minutes. This year is going to be 30 minutes with a super grand finale. It's so big that we can't make it any bigger because we don't have enough room for a safety space. So, there will be additional police officers. We're hiring deputy sheriffs and police officers from other departments to help us with the traffic flow. If you are handicapped, we can make arrangements for you to get to the beach. Just give us a heads up so we can make that happen. So, is there any other comments from any other board members? Motion to adjourn. Or adjourn. Thank you very much.